Thank you, Mike, for welcoming the people back. We're gonna start off here at 6.4, I believe. Good afternoon.
So, Administration is presenting Policy Number 1.006, Financial Assistance for Victims of Fire Policy to be rescinded in response to a direction that was received from Council to discontinue the program. This policy was presented at the November 23rd, 2022 Regular Meeting of Council and was tabled until January 10th, 2023, where it was removed from the agenda and is being brought back today. Policy Number 1.006, Financial Assistance for Victims of Fire, is a municipal grant program that allows the CAO to authorize a one-time bursary in the amount of $2,500 to victims of fire that meet the criteria outlined within the policy. At a Council workshop for the 2023 budget in October, Council gave direction to discontinue this grant program, as such, Administration is bringing forward the policy to be rescinded.
Thank you. Counselor Skarson?
Well, I'll just begin by saying that I've never been in favor of this rescind, this policy. As one of the counselors who has given out checks, I mean, I think it is, for the amount that this is in the budget, it's just, it doesn't make sense to me to rescind it. It's something that brings a little bit of joy to people that are in a, in a big hardship. And, yeah, I'm just, I'm completely opposed against it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
Yes.
Yeah, I support what Counselor Skarson said. Last year, I think we gave six of these for $15,000. It's not very much money, so I am not in favor of rescinding this policy either. Thank you.
Counselor Slipchuck?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm for, going against rescinding this, because I can't see how we're gonna charge for fires and then, on the other hand, we give a check for $2,500. Whereas this here, $2,500, you rescind it, and if we get a family or a person come forward and requests us to drop because of how we have it in the bylaw, well, then this will assist in that aspect. But to be given a charge of fires and then also given a $2,500 check, it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fadeh?
Yeah, again, it's, the general assistance right away is covered through insurance if you have to relocate to, in an apartment or anything like that. And, I mean, if, if I, if I chose to live in a, in a home with, with no, no insurance and I had a, like a fireplace that was not working properly and my place burned down because of, I guess negligence, I mean, I, I don't think it would be fair for the MD to give me, for taxpayers' money, to give me $2,500 for being there. Again, it's covered through insurance. If you have insurance, you are covered right away for any kind of assistance.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion or any other comments?
Here's a question, then, and maybe, maybe it may know the answer to this one, but historically, the ones we've given out, do those, those are checks, so do they still, they still have to deposit a check and it's still held in their bank account for a week before, or whatever, the certain hold period, so they can't access it anyway? Is that, I'm not sure. Like, I, I mean, I think it was nice to be able to do that for them, but I'm just curious if they can, we're not giving them cash, so they just can't go to a motel right away? If they had no money, then I'm not sure what the, you know, how, how they use that check, and maybe staff knows that.
I could see if Corporate Services can answer that. I wouldn't know myself.
I think you're asking if the bank holds the check five days?
Well, I know banks do hold checks, but I'm not sure how.
I think you can get it right away for the most part, any bank.
Well, we have.
So, it depends on what kind of a personal account you have. You either have an account where they have those stipulations that they hold on to, deposited funds for a certain length of time, or you have an account where your checks are directly deposited. I've taken pictures of my checks and deposited them, it affects my balance immediately. But I know that my, my daughter, for instance, would do the same thing, and because she's young, they put a hold on it for the five day.
Well, I just, I know they'll put a hold on it if you don't have the money in the bank to cover it. I mean, most people would, some people won't. Just a curious question, I guess.
Mr. Reeve, thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Crick?
If you deposit the check in person, you have access to the money right away. But if you make a mobile deposit by phone, then you have to wait maybe a day, depends on the bank. Thank you.
I think it depends on your bank. I've done deposits and never had to wait, so. I would put a motion forward myself, but I don't think I need to put a motion, because if we do nothing, nothing changes, right?
If Council wishes to maintain the policy, you could always make a motion to say you'd like to maintain the policy, but really, no motion would be required if you want to keep the policy in place.
Well, through, through the pre-budget workshop, we, we talked about this, and, you know, Administration asked us, and we said, bring it forward. So, I mean, the questions are out there, so it's either, it's carried or defeated. So, I'll, I'll make the motion that, option number one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, sorry, Deputy Reeve Fadeh, making a motion on behalf of Council that Council rescinds Policy Number 1.006, Financial Assistance for Victims of Fire Policy. Any other discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Crick?
I'll just say, I guess it's, I feel bad for anybody that has a fire, and, and I think that, as far as the policy goes, though, is it really our place to be taking tax dollars and giving them to somebody, somebody else? And I do agree with, with Ben Fadeh there, Counselor Fadeh, sorry, that it's, it's not our, it's not the taxpayer's responsibility to give $2,500 to someone if they don't have insurance, or if they have a fireplace or a wood stove that's not hooked up according to codes. So, I guess I'm kinda leaning towards removing the policy.
Thank you. Counselor Skarson?
Yeah, well, we, we have fires for all sorts of reasons. I don't think we ask why the fire happened in order to cut a check for these guys, right? And, I mean, we make decisions every single week that give money to someone for some reason that lots of people are opposed to. So, I mean, just to say that we don't, you know, taxpayers don't want, well, there's, I can think of lots of reasons, lots of things that taxpayers aren't interested in funding, but we still do every day, right? So.
Yes.
Which, which leads me to another, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Which leads me to another point, that maybe we're gonna have to look at the way we're, how much money we're giving away to other, other groups and other things. We've got, we're funded, we subsidize a lot of stuff quite heavily. The ski hill in particular, it's a great facility, and a lot of people thoroughly enjoy it, but it's, it's a, it's being subsidized quite heavily, and same as some of our other recreation stuff. We just can't, we can't give everybody everything, so.
I think you had that opportunity to do so in the budget last fall when we chose not to. So, we, we're getting off topic, but we approved all priority fours and fives, if you remember, for the ski hills, so.
Yeah, this is a pretty small potato compared to a lot of the things that we, we approve.
That was my point, is a small potato, this one here.
Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. If Council chooses to keep this policy, would Council be opposed to us bringing back for, a view with some amendments? For example, under the Policy 1(c), it says, one says that we are to provide an immediate one-time bursary in the amount of $2,500. But 1(c) says that if, we won't do that if the CEO concludes that the fire was not caused by unlawful or suspicious, suspicious activities. I can't give an immediate bursary and at the same time know whether or not it's suspicious, because the fires investigations sometime take several weeks. So, the, inside the policy itself, there is, there's some contradiction. And if I suspect something, I, because I can tell you that as a CAO, it's rare that I'm gonna ever put my finger on c and say, no, no, I think that's suspicious, with absolutely no information. So, if Council wouldn't mind, I'd like to bring this back to Committee of the Home Meeting to talk about a couple of those things that, in the policy, are, are contradictory in nature. I don't know how I would determine whether a fire, it also says that it is perpetrated or abetted by dwellers and their residents. What, what does abetted even mean? Does it mean if someone fell asleep on, on the easy chair with a cigarette? Is that abetted? Did that cause its own fire? I don't know. And so, this is, there are some problems inside the current policy that I'd like to clear up. If Council wants to keep the policy, that's fine, but there are some things we need to clear up, that, to make it, some clarity for Administration.
I think every, Council would be acceptable to that, for sure, to relook at it, for sure. Okay, any, we do have a motion here.
So, Mr. Reeve?
Sorry.
Would he have to rescind this motion? No?
I don't think, I don't think he wants to. This is the, I already went through the motion, didn't I? The Deputy Reeve Fadeh, right? We're, we're having discussion on this motion right now. Any other discussion on this motion?
Just that if we vote on this motion and pass the motion, then it's done, it's not coming back to Council.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so if we defeat the motion, it'll come back to Council for more.
That's correct.
Sounds good.
Everyone has that clear?
If you don't want to rescind it, just, well, no, right? Yeah. Council rescinds, okay. So, I'm not, I'm not in favor of rescinding. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Oh, that's fast. That's defeated? Okay, you bring that, we'll bring that back in the future? Correct. Okay.
Well, do you want, you make a motion stating such?
Do you, you're okay with that?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We're going to 9.5.1? Is that correct? Or did I miss one?
Yeah, that's right.
And then, something I have written down with the two S's, Swagard and Skarson on this? You guys weren't at that?
Yeah, because we weren't at the public hearing.
Yeah, you guys weren't at that public hearing, correct?
So, then we can't vote on this anyway, so we're just gonna walk out.
All right.
Thank you. Just called.
There's lots of pizza back there. I think so. Hey, good afternoon.
So, we're here for the second reading of Bylaw Number 1830, the Public Notifications Bylaw. It came to the last Council meeting for a public hearing where we received two, three presentations against it. We also received two letters against the bylaw. The bylaw would establish advertising methods for MD information that would move us to largely a digital presence. The bylaw falls within Council's 2022-2027 Strategic Plan of Providing Services in a Timely and Cost-effective Manner. Without the restriction of meeting a deadline for weekly newspaper, planning and development notices can be published in a more timely manner, reducing the wait time for most development In addition, last week, I received an email from our ad rep at the Cold Lake Sun. As of February 27th, they will stop publishing a physical newspaper and will be going completely digital with that paper. It should be noted that this bylaw does not mean the end of newspaper advertising. It just means that the majority of it will shift there. In the cases of public hearings where the majority of the MD is affected, we will still have those public hearing notices in the newspaper. A good example of that is the upcoming public engagement sessions for the Municipal Development Plan that the Planning and Development Department is doing, as well as the notice of auction being done by Corporate Services for the tax, tax auction sale coming up. So, with that, is there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I have several questions, Mr. Reeve, thank you. It's like in 2.3, it says may, and it says may not, but all the year, all these years we were able to advertise, you know, with no bylaw, and so I don't really understand the purpose of this bylaw. Is it to eventually get rid of newspaper advertising? Is that the intent?
It's not the intent to get rid of newspaper advertising, not at all.
Why do we need it, then? Yeah.
Changes to the MGA in 2016 allowed for us to start moving our advertisements online. There are mandated, there are rules for some advertising, especially when it comes to planning and development, where it had to be advertised in a newspaper. In 2016, that changed, and the Alberta Government allowed us to start going digital.
Okay, so, in the budget, we put X amount of dollars, like 100,000 or so for print media, is that right?
There's, there's $186,000 in budget right now for print media, and that includes all of our, that includes all of our advertising, that includes radio, newspaper, magazine, digital.
Yeah, I just don't think this bylaw is needed to put advertising on, on the MD website. Are there more people who are reading print media than using the MD website?
I can't.
You probably can't tell me.
I can't tell you that for sure. There is no way, or we have not, we haven't gone into the citizen engagement study that would allow us to know if they're finding out their MD information from a newspaper versus the MD website. However, our MD website sees tens of thousands of visitors every month. In the summer, that goes up to hundreds of thousands, based on our involvement with recreation in the summer. We have seen nothing but an increase of the use of our website over the last 10 years since we moved to the Civic Plus platform. And now, with our website, you have the ability to sign up for an account where every time we post something, whether it's a public hearing, whether it's Council highlights, you will receive it in your inbox immediately.
But weren't things working well without this bylaw before?
They were, but, but there is, it does limit, it does put some extra time into some processes, including with Planning and Development, with some of their permitting processes. And then, also, if we receive event information, say, on a Tuesday after, or a Wednesday afternoon, the newspapers have already shut down when we can book space for, and if we don't get it in time, and there's a possibility of an event happening over the weekend, we're not going to get that in the newspaper. This just allows for more immediate news, immediately. No pun intended.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I know I had, we had three presentations here opposing, and you said there's two more. I've had a number of phone calls, as have other members of Council, and the Reeve, I think. And I also received an email strongly opposing this, because they have a concern that eventually print media or newspapers will, will not have any advertising. So, I can't support this myself. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your information.
Through the reef, to Counselor Crick, I would like to also point out that we do publish a resident newsletter. It goes out eight times a year, and it goes directly in their mailboxes.
Yeah, I had quite a few phone calls that, I, I think it got out there that we're gonna totally shut down the paper, and that's not true. And that was the bigger concern, that the people that phoned me, that we're gonna, like, take the paper right out, so. But I, I still, there has to be room for newspaper, and there's still a lot of seniors. That's where you mostly get it from, the seniors. You know, the younger, like, even me, I have a hard time with computers and all that, and I'd rather read than in a paper myself.
To the Reeve, being that, I'd like to point out that our metrics on our social media site put our, our senior population, ages 55-plus, in the second highest demographic of users on our social media platforms. So, that's food for thought as well.
The seniors that know how to operate it, yeah, not the ones that don't. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Slipchuck.
Yeah, I've had a few calls over this too, as well, and that's same, like you said, a lot of them thought that we're just cutting it out completely, like, and they heard $100,000 was cut. Yeah, and then, once I explained that to them, we, we cut from 1, 286 to 186. Last year, we spent approximately, what, 216 on advertising? So, we're only gonna be, take a reduction of 30,000 probably, and maybe more if we can, if we can find ways. But it's not the 100,000 they're worried about, and I'm, I, I'm all for this.
Yeah. You wanna go ahead? Yeah, go ahead, Deputy Reeve.
I received a couple of calls as well, that was the same concerns, thinking that we're gonna drop the whole thing, and, you know, we're not. This is, it's progressive, we're slowly, I mean, everything's moving that way. You know, you can't even get a, a bill from, from Telus anymore, you know, you know, like, like for your plates, everything, everything's only electronically.
Yes.
You can't send anything in the mail. I'm, I'm not in favor of cutting newspaper, but we're, you know, but we're not doing that with this policy. We're, we are, you know, we're, we're reducing costs in advertising, and that's, that's where this is. This is not about cutting newspapers, this is all about keeping our, our budget in line.
Yes, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, through the reef, thank you. I have one question. Under 2.3, which I mentioned, I think, last time, why don't we change the word may to Because if you say may, it means you may not.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I didn't see, I was looking it up here.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and Counsel, to the question of why don't we change may to will, then there would be no point in the bylaw. We'd be, we'd be exactly where we are today. I think it's important to point out that 2.3 says we may choose to use one or more. We will be advertising all of our stuff electronically, but where, where strategically necessary, we'll be continuing to use print media. The size of the print media advertisement may, may be slightly smaller, directing people to the website or to social media. We may find that there are certain things where we are targeting in terms of our advertising that are better suited for social media as opposed to print ad. It's gonna be a strategic decision made by the Communications Department. And on those large, across-the-board, multilateral issues that we deal with, you know, the MPC, for example, or the, the Municipal Development Plan, the MDP, those things will continue to be advertised on print media. I think Counselor Slipchuck's comments are exactly accurate. We, we spent somewhere in the vicinity of $215,000 last year on print media. This year, we reduced from a budget of 286 to 186. The actual reduction will be, will be significant, but not, but not over. There, there is a, there seems to be the rumor that we are cutting all print and we're, and we're walking away from the newspapers. We are not. We are merely reducing the budget and trying to be a bit more strategic in how we spend taxpayer dollars. I know there are places we can advertise essentially for free, as opposed to paying large dollars for large print advertisements when maybe they're not necessary. Currently, under the current, the current setup, we don't have any choice, so the money has to be spent. We're suggesting that there is a better way to, would be tactical with, with taxpayer dollars.
Thank you, Counselor Crick.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. After all this discussion, I still don't see the value or why we need this bylaw, so I will be opposing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I, I like the way it's set up, and I like the fact that we can opt in, anybody can opt in and get emails. It's actually better notification than potentially waiting for a weekly paper to come out, getting it instant. My only concern is, and maybe you have an answer for this, is if people don't have email, and it's probably a few people, not a lot, then, like, can they sign up to get, like, a, a letter for notifications in the mail or something, or how, how would that work?
We, that would end up being a lot of mailing costs and administrative burden to mail out something for every notification we're going to put on the website and not in a newspaper. You can also receive these notifications through text messages. I know that's another piece of technology that not, maybe, everybody has, but the majority of the information, I don't think we can mail it out that way. There would still be a delay, takes two to three days for ma, well, any mail that goes outside of Bonneville goes to Edmonton first before it comes back to Cold Lake.
Yeah.
In the case of we're doing something for Cherry Grove, I don't think that it would, it wouldn't be a cost savings, and it would actually be a heavier financial burden.
And then, one other point that I wanted to make is, I know some boxes, like, I was in Fort Kent yesterday, and I heard there that they, they received their newspaper in the mailbox, and they haven't, it's hit and miss, they were saying, some people are saying, Fort Kent, to me, when they get the pa, when the paper even shows up in the box. So, if they can sign up for an email, whenever there's a notification, they'll actually get, have more consistent notifications than waiting for a paper that may not show up.
Through the reef, to Counselor Crick, part of that is, if you have your flyer service shut off on your mailbox, you will not receive the newspaper that is unaddressed ad mail, and you won't receive the newsletter, which is also unaddressed ad mail.
Yeah, the, in Fort Kent, I do agree with you there. In Fort Kent, there's actually a box specifically for the Lakeland today, where you, like, pull it open, and there's a stack, and you grab one. So, that wouldn't apply necessarily in Fort Kent. It's just that some days, there's, some Tuesdays, it doesn't even come to the Fort Kent box for some reason, so.
Yeah, I have to say, the same happens in La Corrie, too, sometimes you get there. Or sometimes, my mother takes five, five herself, so that could be the problem there.
Anyways, I'll, I'll make the motion, option number one, that we pass this as presented. I guess it's for first reading.
Second.
Second reading, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of Council that Bylaw Number 1830, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87, to establish methods for advertising the information required under the Municipal Government Act be given second reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mrs. Carey? Thank you. Can we do third reading right now as well? I need a motion to, or I need someone to make a motion to go into third reading. Thank you, Counselor Slipchuck, for making a motion on behalf of Council that Bylaw Number 1830 be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carey, thank you. Can we call, Trace, can you call those guys back?
Mr. Reeve, thank you for putting those items ahead, so I can leave, and I'll be going to more friendly confines right now, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mike, for your services today. Have a safe trip to Edmonton. Did Tracy, oh, there he is. If I'm wrong, tell me. I think we're on seven, 7.1, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. This is Development Permit Application 2022-D-241. The applicant is Stan Tech Consulting Limited, and the owners of the property are the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority. The applicant is applying for a change of use from industrial to institutional for a fire hall and crew house. The properties are located between Township Road 612 and Highway 28, a quarter of a mile west of the town of Bonneville. Adjacent properties are residential parcels, a quarter section, and a remnant. The applicant is applying on behalf of the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority for a change of use to initiate the process of refurbishing the existing industrial building into a fire hall and renovating the existing cabin into a crew house. Referrals were sent to the town of Bonneville, as this area is within the intermunicipal development plan referral area. Referrals were sent to the town of Bonneville as this area is within the intermunicipal development plan referral area, and we received no response. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on January fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and we have received no response. Recommendation for development application two thousand twenty-two dash D dash two four one is approved the request for a change of use from industrial to institutional for a fire hall and crew house as a discretionary use as per Part Six of the General Regulations and Part Seven, Section sixty, eighty-three point two of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. One, an approved building permit is required as per the Safety Code, Alberta Safety Codes Act. Two, applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Three, building waste materials shall be contained on site in a waste bin or a covered slash enclosed trailer as per Section Three of the Nuisance Bylaw number nine eight one. And number four, approval from Alberta Transportation is required.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, number one, to approve the change of use.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of counsel that counsel approves development permit application number two zero two two D dash two four one, a change of use from industrial to institutional for fire hall and crew house within northwest of ten sixty-one six, west of the fourth M as discretionary use pursuant to Part Six of the General Regulations and Part Seven, Section eighty-three point two of the Land Use Bylaw for Stan Tech Consulting Limited as per recommendation presented. Any discussion on this? Motion, yes, Deputy Reeve Fadav.
Good morning, so that is, that includes both properties, right? Because there, there is, there's two, there's the, the cabin is separate than that, so this would then will be for both properties?
Yeah, through the reef to Deputy Reeve Fadav, that is correct, we're doing both of the properties at the same time.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carey, thank you.
Thank you.
Onto seven point two.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Application, development application number two zero two three dash D dash zero zero five for approach construction variance. Administration has received and is presenting application twenty twenty-three D dash zero zero five for council consideration, wherein the applicant is requesting a variance from condition one of the conditionally approved subdivision two zero two two dash S dash zero one zero attached as Appendix A. The approach, or sorry, the subdivision was approved on November the twenty-third. The applicant is requesting a variance to the current MD of Bonneville approach construction standards as required by condition one of the subdivision approval. Specifically, they are requesting to be allowed to construct the required approaches without culverts. Notification of the variance request was sent to MD of Bonneville Infrastructure Services for review and comments to be considered at the January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three council meeting. Infrastructure Services have been to site on multiple inspections and have determined a culvert is required on both proposed locations. So I would like to bring up, I have video, if you would like to see the video, or I have pictures that were taken two days ago, if you prefer to see those. Let me know if you want them, or if you're good with what we've got going on.
Yeah, Counselor Skarsen, then Deputy Reeve.
I was just saying, I would, I'd like to see what you got, for sure.
Okay. Do I have permission to continue with that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Robin, if we could bring up the video, please? So this video was taken in two thousand nineteen in the summer showing the proposed locations of the subdivisions. It's a, it's a three sixty video, so we can move it around and show the depth of the ditches and, and so forth. So we're going to take it right back to the original one, which, yeah, there's good Christie. So this would be the first approach that's currently in place. So Mr. Schiller did put an approach in here prior to inspections being conducted and those sorts of things. So this is the first ditch in question. As we're turning right now, we will be, just keep going, that is standing at the approach looking north, so there is a hill to the north of him. If we can turn right around and go south, we can see that the road does proceed downwards going south as well. We'll continue on the road to the second approach. Just play Christie. And this is the second approach location. Again, we're standing south looking north, and then when we turn around, we are looking south from, from that place of, of the second approach. So now if we can go to the images, and if we start with the north one.
Yeah, go ahead and ask.
Are those, I didn't see approaches though, so is that the location of?
That video was from two thousand nineteen, prior to the subdivision and prior to approaches being installed. The subdivision was granted in November of two thousand twenty-two. Okay, so we are standing at the bottom of this approach, or sorry, of the bottom of the hill, looking north for the first approach that is in place currently. So we'll go to number two, and it's just a progression, number three, walking up there, we can see what the depth, depth of the ditch looks like while snow covered. That's the existing approach that does not have a culvert in it currently, and as per the conditions, does require a culvert.
Excuse, excuse me, I have a question.
So that one doesn't have a culvert?
He did not install a culvert, but the requirement is that a culvert is needed. He is requesting a variance from condition number one, which states that culverts must be in place.
So we went to do the inspection, and then we realized that there wasn't a culvert put in?
No, the applicant brought this forward stating that he did not see where a culvert would be required in this. So in essence, he is putting forward an appeal to the condition that was set place. So that's the culvert, or sorry, the approach that is in place. Now we'll go to location number two, south one and south two on the images.
And if I could add for counsel's clarity, the, the subdivision application was approved by the Development Authority in November. The appeal period came and went, there was no appeal, but subsequent to that, the, the applicant has indicated he doesn't think that a, a culvert is required. We have no, administratively, we had no wiggle room, because the Development Authority approved the application with the condition, there was no appeal. So we're, we, we are left with policy. Under the attachment A in our municipal road approach policy, it requires a minimum of four hundred millimeter, which is a sixteen inch culvert. And if there is no ditch, ditch depth, it says no ditch depth, then approval from the MD of Bonneville will be required for approach installation without a culvert. So the question really is for counsel today is, out of those conditions, out of those requirements in the policy and attachment A one and two, is there ditch depth, and if there is ditch depth, then the policy require, would require a four hundred millimeter. I think there is some conversation that could be had there, and if there is no ditch depth, then the MD could, typically what would happen with this, if it hadn't been approved by the Development Authority the way it had been approved, and Mr. Dinenko and his staff had gone out and said there's no ditch depth, then that approval would have been granted directly from transportation. However, the, the, the approval condition was approved by the Development Authority, which left, which left staff with, with no, no ability to, to vary from, from policy.
Okay, I guess I went to see it with myself. The, the first, like, the one she talked about on the north, you'd have to build the road up to the same height as the road to put a four hundred in, so I don't think that makes sense to me. And there is a ditch, you could see the ditch from this side, but there's really, it's almost on top of the hill, so there's no water. To me, you know, I'm not the specialist here, but to me, I don't think the water would, there wouldn't be enough water to flow there. On the second ditch, on the second approach, there is a, there is a culvert on the approach to the south, and the, you know, there is some kind of a ditch, and if you had like a three hundred in there, like, I think that could work, but to put a four hundred or a three hundred on top of the hill doesn't make sense to me, but I don't know, you know, I'm not the specialist on this as myself. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I'm just, so I'm, I had a talk with Mr. Schiller yesterday, and I guess maybe I got a different message, but he was telling me that he didn't want to put a call, or, an approach on the one parcel that his neighbor bought. Or he's buying, or whatever.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that cannot happen, because due to the Municipal Government Act, we are required to have an approach before registration of any subdivision can be sent forward to land titles for registration. Therefore, he must put a culvert in regardless of what the coming down the road or the future.
I think his hope was that it was, because it's next door to his land, so he was able to access it through his own land?
They are two separate quarter section as well, so that it's not just a cut and dry.
Yeah, Darcy, I looked into this, and you want to sell the quarter, but you can't sell the quarter unless you have an approach, so it's, it's, he has to have an approach. I guess if the, if the land, the guy that wants, like, he might buy it, he might not, like, we, like, we can't make the decision, like, it's, you know, a hundred percent that he's going to buy it probably, but we can't just assume that, right?
Well, couldn't he, like, if he ever did sell it, say, was to someone else, I mean, he wouldn't be able to sell a, a land without an approach, right?
We have no way of, of guaranteeing that when that land is sold, that it will be sold with an approach, other than doing it before the registration. Therefore, we guarantee, we cover our requirements of the Municipal Government Act stating that those legal physical approaches are in place, and then if what they do down the road, we, we've done what we needed to do according to what we're, we're told through the, through the acts.
And, and the other issue is, there's no, there's no parcel to be sold until it's subdivided.
Yeah, it has to be subdivided.
There's, there's nothing to sell at this point.
Okay, once, we'll go Counselor Swiger, then Counselor Slipchuk.
So I, I think I liked Administration's recommendation that we wait until, that we table it until spring when the water's flowing, and, and we can take, take a look. Like, they can take a look to see if culverts are actually required, because just, because from what you showed me, yeah, there's ditches there, because the road's raised up, but it looks like there's not really a ditch there, it just flows, like, it just kind of flows, you know, like, laterally away from the road, so maybe you don't need a culvert, but until you look at it in spring.
Yeah, Counselors Slipchuk, then Counselor Skarsen.
Okay. Infrastructure Services have been to the site on multiple occasions, inspections, and have determined a culvert is required on both proposed approach locations. Then, we got a motion to wait till spring. Uh, sorry. Did you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Then we got a motion to wait till spring. Well, aren't, aren't we gonna, like, that's, infrastructure's job is to give us what they need, requirements? Now we want to either, we trust them in other things, but not this one? Decisions?
Yeah, but there'll come a day when you go look at something yourself, and you'll say, well, maybe we don't need it like that, that's why we're here at council. People phone us and ask us, you know, like, we, we do go look at things, right?
Okay, so then I, I'll make the motion, I'll leave it till spring, then, option one.
I think Counselor Swiger did that, but I'm just curious, is it, did he mention, is it like a money thing, or what, like, why doesn't he want to put a culvert? I know I've got two approaches on my, where I'm at with no culverts, and it's a swimming pool in the summertime, or in the spring, so I'm just curious why he, did he give you a reason why he didn't want culverts? So I mean, if that doesn't flow under, it's going to flow over, right?
Yeah, but the one, the one there's, well, I'm not, I'm not missed, I'm not, I'm not the MD fellows here, but it's right on top of a hill, there won't be, to me, there won't be hardly no flow there whatsoever, so why would you need a culvert, especially a four hundred? That's like, that's sixteen inches, correct? Like, you'd have to raise it up to the, higher than the road to put in a culvert there.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah.
Through the reef and counsel, Counselor Slipchuk was absolutely accurate. We have, we have engineers who work in our engineering department, and their recommendation is that there's two culverts going there. Now, we could have a discussion on what size those culverts should be, but it does occur to me that, that counsel having a discussion at the council table about a culvert is, is pretty deep in the weeds for a counsel. So there, there is a, there is a recommendation, there's two of them, both made by Mr. Dinenko's department suggesting that culverts are required at both, and second, that we wait until spring to see what water actually does. Our long-term concern is, is if the culvert is not installed at, at the subdivision authority's request, and then something happens to that approach, and that approach is washed out, we're stuck with the repairs and maintenance of that approach. That's, that's the long-term impact here. Maybe this spring won't be a big runoff, so maybe it looks okay, but the fact is that, once an approach goes in and we approve it, we are then left with the replacement. If that culvert, or if that approach is washed out with a, with a, with some water coming from, however far up from on top of the hill, we are left with the repair and the rebuild of that, of that approach. That's why we are fairly dogmatic about culverts going in, whether it's a sixteen or a twelve inch culvert, I think that's a conversation that could be had. But I, but our department has certainly made the recommendation, from their professional opinion, that culverts are required.
Okay, Deputy Reeve, and then I'll let you speak, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's not right now, this concerns me, it's, it's later on as well. You know, what if the property sells? I mean, the amount of times I've been shown an approach with no culvert, and the amount of nasty words towards the MD have been a lot about why we didn't put a culvert in, a road that has an approach, has been, has been too many times. So with, with, I know this is developer, and it's, it's going to get sold off in the, in the future, and then, you know, like, later on, what's going to happen to that person that buys it, right? So we have to look out after our interests and also the interest of the next purchaser.
Go ahead, Monte.
So I have been up to site on numerous occasions, met with Mr. Schiller. Well, I don't disagree with you, Reeve, the approach when he first subdivided was exactly on the top of that hill, which, then you can get away with it.
He put it in the wrong, put it in the wrong location.
Right, and now it is, he chose to, to pick a spot directly after a cut in the road, in our road right away, so that he could utilize the dirt, I'm assuming. So the litmus test for whether it needs a culvert or not, agreed there isn't much collection area, but there is some, so you got a two-inch rainfall, it's going to go over the roads. So the litmus test is, is putting this culvert, making the drainage better, the same, or worse? And in this case, it's definitely making it worse. So while a four hundred maybe, maybe proves some challenges to install, it's not impossible, because you are, you do counter sink culverts anyways for various reasons, but a three hundred, I'm not a municipal engineer, but a three hundred would likely suffice, and that was, would be very doable. Had he moved this approach twenty meters to the south, there would have been ditch on both sides, and while there isn't a defined one meter deep ditch, there is a ditch there. We dug some holes there and, and took some shots, some survey, there is a ditch there, it's between eight, eight inches and a foot, between the road and the, and the V ditch and the back. So another thing he brought up when we were there is that he could divert the water to go to the west. That's, that would require a Water Act, which is a Word of Environment approval, and that would be on the proponent, not on us. So there are a few options there, but it definitely needs a culvert, in my opinion.
Okay, well, why don't we just give him the culverts and give him, tell him to put in two three hundreds, and pass this, make a motion to put two three hundreds in, he's got to do it, and then we don't have to suspend it till spring. Then it's done, we don't have to bring it back.
Through the reef, he would have to supply his own culverts, and we would do the final inspection, yes?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not an addition to a approach, it's a new approach.
Yes. Is that correct, can we do that?
I believe option two allows for the three hundred culvert to be installed.
Okay. What do you guys think of that? Darcy, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I'm, I don't know why he wouldn't want to put culverts in, I mean, unless there was a legitimate reason. You know, like, I mean, anyone who doesn't, who has a approach without a culvert, probably wishes they had a culvert, I would guess, right? I don't know if it needs to be as big or whatever, I'm not that professional, but I'm, I'm more concerned about the C O's comments. I mean, why do we bring these to council then if we can't make, have discussions and? council, then, if we can't make, have discussions and, and decide on something, right? I mean, if we're just, no offense to administration, but if we just go by what administration says all the time, we wouldn't be here, right? I mean, I, it, it's good to have these discussions and topics, I don't know about it, and, I mean, when I see a sixteen-inch culvert at the top of a hill, I'm, I'd probably question it myself, and say, why does it need to be that big, right?
So a, a three hundred is twelve-inch, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Cause I, I think this is, uh, oh, you, you, you probably have a motion on all the table.
Is he made it first?
Well, he was talking about it, but I think, right? Or did you make a motion?
I actually made the motion.
Okay, I apologize. Okay.
Mr., Mr., sorry. Can you- I was just gonna say, I, maybe we're in the weeds here, but like I said, that's what we're talking about, and, and I just made that motion, cause, cause admin, you, uh, you came up with that as an option, as number one. So I assumed, I assumed that, that, that administration wanted to look at the spring runoff to see if culverts were really required or not. So I'm not sure why, why you even put that in as an option, if, if you're already so happy that the culvert should go in, then I'm, I'm okay with that too. I don't know.
Well, you're pushing for culverts more than, than not, so why are we, why are we waiting to spring? We can give him the option, he can do what he wants to do, and, cause I'm pretty sure if you come to spring, they're gonna, there's, the recommendation is still gonna be for culverts, correct?
The, if I may, Mr. Reeve, option one was to take a look at the topography of what happens in this, in the spring, to determine whether it would be a four hundred or a three hundred culvert, or whatever that might look like. That was the reasoning for option one. Option two is that you gentlemen make the decision today to say that the three hundred millimeter culverts will be used in both of those approaches, and there'll be no further discussion on it.
Okay. So we're, we're debating for spring, if it's a four hundred or a three hundred, or we can make a motion right now just to go with two three hundreds?
Through the Reeve, to council, our, our policy does not allow us to deviate anything other than a four hundred. Four hundred is the smallest. Right? That's clear?
Okay.
So even if he came back into spring and said, we could go with a three hundred, we have to vote, make, vote on that, right?
Through the Reeve, if we wait till spring, uh, the, the runoff will definitely go across his approach, and potentially across four sixty-eight hour range road as well, just for the snow that's on the back slopes there now.
And, and through the Reeve, to council, I, I would suggest that, uh, like, a couple of other policies we've talked about, uh, earlier today, this is another one of those policies that has absolutely no ability to deviate at the administrative level.
Right.
If the policy said, uh, uh, something along the lines at the discretion of the, the manager of transportation services in our engineering department, we probably would have solved this problem several weeks ago, and had probably gone in and approved a couple of three hundreds, um, at, at our, at our own level.
Good to know.
It's, it's these, uh, it's these policies that have absolutely no ability for, for administration to apply any discretion to them, that create, and we've had two or three of these today, and I think we'll talk about another one yet.
And I see his point, he's gotta go there, and all, all you have is four hundred, you can't, you can't go, hey, well, I'm gonna give you a three hundred, cause you're going against our policy. So, but we can, we can make a motion to go with three hundreds.
Yeah, and I mean, we just sit here and talk about how we have the professionals, but we don't, there's no ability for them to make a decision on, I mean, you could probably even go smaller than three hundred if you chose to, right? I mean, I don't know, I, I've no idea about culverts, but-
Through the Reeve, to Counselors Skarson, my experience, three hundred is about as small as you wanna go for sanitation, reasons and everything else, yeah.
So then that should be part of the motion, too, to bring that policy back, to say, give these guys a little bit of leeway, or make it a three hundred millimeter as well, right? Then we don't have this fifteen-minute discussion.
Okay.
I can reset my motion.
Okay, well, you both reset?
That's fine.
Sorry, I kinda, I missed. All right, would someone else like to make a different motion?
I was just gonna say that I will make a motion for number two, but with a three hundred meter, millimeter culvert, and then also add that, um, we revisit the policy in the future to amend that you are able to make those decisions as well, when a three hundred is required. If that's the smallest that you think you can go, that'll make sense?
All right, well, that, we'll give him some time to write that, uh, write that up.
Mr. Reeve, question, uh-
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there ever a situation where you absolutely know you don't need a culvert at all? That would be, that would be the dumbest thing to do, but you gotta put it in anyway, because that's the policy? Like, at the top of the hill, where you know the water runs both ways, it's not gonna run through a culvert at all?
Through the Reeve, to Counselor Swiger, absolutely, if it's on top of the hill, it's, it can be a dry approach. There are a lot of dry approaches out in the area, or, or rolling hills, if you will, if you have a, a land with rolling hills, if you choose to put it on top of one of those, where it's the highest point around, then yes.
So is that, is that, would that mean, though, Mr. Reeve, that maybe we need to review that policy and kind of give them that leeway?
Well, they probably have that already.
Well, I don't think so. They have to put in a culvert.
No.
An approach is a culvert.
There, there is, uh, there is a second part, uh, the, um, second sentence in, or part number two in the appendix, does say if there is no ditch depth, uh, then, um, uh, not putting a culvert in would be at the discretion of, of the M.D. The problem with the appendix, when it says that, it doesn't say who, they, who is the M.D.? Is that an administrative decision? Is that the, is that the infrastructure department? Is that coming back to council, come back to development authority? That's why I, I completely agree with, uh, Counselors Skarson in having this, uh, policy come back for some discussion. Uh, because what is, and, uh, we say no ditch depth. What does no ditch depth mean? A six-inch depth ditch, that's got ditch depth, it just says no ditch depth. So we haven't even defined in the policy what that actually even means. So I think this policy needs to come back, um, to a committee of the whole meeting and, uh, and have some discussion.
Okay, you guys take a read at that, and then we'll-
It looks good, it's what I said.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, uh, Counselor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the variance to municipal construction standards for the road approach specified in policy number three A double O seven, municipal road approach policy for development, application number twenty twenty-three D dash zero zero five from the standard four hundred, uh, uh, M, culvert to the three hundred culvert as presented, and furthermore directs administration to bring back a policy number three A zero zero seven, municipal road approach policy back to future committee of the whole meetings for discussion. I got tongue-tied there. Uh, any discussion on this diameter? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Have a great day, guys.
Thank you.
Number nine, nine point one.
You're up, Donnie.
And, okay, that's nine point one is the motion, uh, so we can start putting some districts at direct control, and Counselor Slipchuk read into the notice of motion last council meeting, and I'll second it this, today, I guess.
Okay, thank you. The motion, uh, so do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, to, to second it, right? That's my understanding, with the notice of motion, we need to have a seconder to-
That, that is correct, and the motion would be, uh, uh, at the, now therefore be resolved. So, uh, I guess it'd be Counselor Slipchuk, like, that making that motion with, with yourself as the seconder.
Okay.
So we need to do the one that move by Counselor Slipchuk first? Okay?
Okay.
You're good with that?
Okay, move by Counselor Slipchuk that council directs administration-
Move by Counselor Slipchuk that council directs administration to begin the process of redesignating potential industrial use lands, li- either in or adjacent to all M.D. industrial use area structure plans, to direct control districts, and furthermore, that council directs administration to bring a report back to council no later than February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, describing the process, and a list of lands to be redesignated for council prioritization.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the, any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. Stephanie, did I do that backwards, or do I need to make another motion here? Or the, my computer screen has two of them on there. I guess it's the same motion, correct?
Yeah, it's only one.
Okay, cause I got two on my, that's what's confusing me here, that, sorry. Okay, thank you. Nine point two point one. Good afternoon.
Uh, this, uh, is the second time, uh, you will have seen this report. Um, it is, um, the municipal district of Bonneville is one of fourteen-member municipalities who support the Greater North Foundation, which is a housing management body that provides affordable, affordable seniors' housing, uh, and community housing in, in the region. Pardon me. Uh, the Greater North Foundation is requesting approval from each of their fourteen-member municipalities, as per Alberta Seniors and Housing Corporation requirements, to establish a restricted capital reserve for the purpose of maintenance, replacement, and renewal of their aging facility infrastructure. This requ- request is consistent with the guidelines outlined in the Management Body Operation and Administration Regulations. Um, there was a question of, um, of me, uh, at the last council meeting, that I was unable to answer at the time, and I'd like to thank Deputy Reeve Fadé for asking it, because it forced me to get, uh, some more information. So now I, I actually understand how this works here. Um, the Greater North Foundation requisition came about through the annexation of Ward Six North, or that is ID three forty-nine, and applies to all Ward Six North properties only, uh, excepting the northeast corner of Townships Seventy-four and Township Seventy-five. Ward Six North is included in the M.D.'s equalized assessment. Uh, and so, um, the, the recommendation, uh, remains the same, um, that council, that the council of the municipal district of Bonneville approves the establishment of a reserve fund by the Greater North Foundation, as outlined in the Alberta Housing Act and Management Body Operation and Administration Regulation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much. It's the first time I've been thanked for, uh, creating more work, but, uh, you're welcome. And, uh, on that, uh, thanks for the, uh, for the research. Yeah, I'll make the option for, uh, option number one, as recommended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Fadé for making a motion on behalf of council. The council of the municipal district of Bonneville approves the establishment of reserve fund by the Greater North Foundation, as outlined in Alberta Housing Act and Management Body Operation and Administration Regulations. Any discussion on this? Yes, uh-
I think I, Mr. Reeve, sorry, I missed that-
Go ahead.
Last meeting when you discussed this, but the, um, I, I don't quite understand the ho- the seniors' housing, affordable housing and seniors' housing that they provide. And so, uh, they're taking a one percent requisition from our municipal taxes to go toward seniors' affordable housing and community housing? Uh, but is there any in our, I don't understand that, sorry.
Well, not up there, there isn't, but, uh, we're, it is what it is, right?
But maybe I'll just ask, what is it, though? So we're, we're, we're putting money away because we have to, apparently. But is it for, is it for community housing, sort of in the Greater North, that's, that we're-
Through, through the Reeve?
Yeah.
Up until the time that, uh, Ward Six North was annexed into, um, the M.D. of Bonneville, uh, there were, this, did, this requisition did not apply, uh, to, um, to the M.D. Now that that ID three forty-nine is part of, of the M.D., um, they did, um, have at that time a requisition in that area, uh, for the Greater North Foundation. So this is merely a request by them, um, according to the requirements of Alberta Seniors and Housing, um, s- for them to, um, establish a capital reserve for, um, renewal and replacement of their, of their infrastructure. And, and because of those requirements, they are required for each one of the fourteen-member municipalities to approve that. The requisition itself applies to the property, or the taxpayers, um, or the rate payers in ID three forty-nine, or Ward Six North, only.
And so, can I just ask another clarification? So that, that was two hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred sixty-one? Is that the value that-
That is what the requisition was last year through the Reeve.
And then, so can I just ask, maybe, cause it doesn't seem like we know, um, the affordable housing, uh, community housing, that they're actually funding, can, can we find out for future where that is, what they do, that sort of thing? Like, that's not in our, that's not in ID three forty-nine, though, is it? I mean, it's just their, their annex-
No.
Their, their requisition funding from, from us, cause they did it before, apparently, so.
Well, the, the, I think that used to belong to what Buffalo, or no, or no Lakelibish County?
Lakelibish.
Yeah, so Lakelibish County had to, when they had the ID three forty-nine. And now that we acquired it, it's our responsibility for that section of land.
Well, I guess what I'm interested in here is, I'm not even sure in the M.D. of Bonneville, if we have affordable seniors' housing and community housing, though, do we, that we fund?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. Do we? Does anybody know that?
A guy that does know that the best is gone. Mike knows that the best, I think we do. Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
It's probably the same thing in our area for-
Maybe so, like, on lodging housing?
It's always, uh, cause there's, there's absolutely nobody, nobody up there, right? That's, uh, first, for nothing to do with it.
Yeah, this is like a one percent of, of the assessment. It's basically just asset management, uh, for things that might break down. They just wanna have the money in reserves to pay for the, uh, things that are, uh, you know-
Yeah, I-
Time to replace, right?
I guess, I, but I, I guess I'll ask, though, maybe admin can sort of give us that information, that how, you know, how, how much do they actually collect from everyone, and how is that used?
Um, through the Reeve. So, um, the, the Alberta Seniors and Housing actually establishes the boundaries for each, um-
Area.
Housing management body. So, um, we inherited that, that-
Yeah.
ID three forty-nine was part of the boundary that already existed. And so, um, that's how the M.D. of Bonneville became responsible for this. Um-
Just went to their website. Are there any lodges that are within the Greater North Foundation that are located in these locations?
It's, um, in Greater North, so they have locations in Athabasca, Lakelibish, Boyle, and Plamondon.
Yes.
Um, and that is, um, the area that, that, um, this requisition helps support. The amount i- is determined by, first of all, the Greater North Foundation determines what their budgetary requirement is for a year, um, and then they utilize the equalized assessment to prorate that amount across their fourteen-member municipalities. Um, so when they're looking at the M.D. of Bonneville's, um, portion, they're only looking at the equalized assessment that, uh, comes from ID three forty-nine.
Yeah, okay.
And through the Reeve, I think there is a, um, I think this is a possible discussion with the Minister of, of, of seniors' housing. Um, the boundaries were set when Lak- uh, years ago, when Lakelibish, uh, wasn't in control of ID three forty-
It's no longer Lakelibish.
Uh, and now, now when you look at the four or five locations of the seniors' housing that's taking, that, that this funding is going to, none of them are coming anywhere close to the M.D. of Bonneville. The closest one is Lakelibish, you're out in Boyle, you're out in Athabasca. Um, it's possibly a discussion with the minister regarding whether or not the boundaries make sense, and why are we funding seniors' lodging, uh, um, in, uh, in, in, uh, in seniors' lodges, which are two hundred plus, three hundred- two hundred plus, three hundred plus kilometers away.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point.
Because I do believe, and it's probably one of these things that's just grandfathered and it's become historical, is that these boundaries are set years ago, when Lac Lebiche was actually the governing body in charge of ID three forty-nine, and they received the revenue from that. In about two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, when Lac Lebiche, when the province bought Lac Lebiche out, for lack of a better word, out of three forty-nine, and went back to an ID for a while, and then we took over. But back then Lac Lebiche actually had it, and, and it made sense then, they had a home, they had a seniors' lodge in Lac Lebiche, they had a seniors' lodge in, in Plamondon, they had a seniors' lodge in Boyle, all, all basically either on or inside the border of Lac Lebiche County. So.
Something to look for.
It, it may be a conversation or a letter worth writing to suggest that we, ID three forty-nine should have nothing to do with the funding.
Because if we're gonna have seniors' money going, we might as well have it going here.
Yeah, well, that's my point, and Mr. Reeve, just, I guess one final question. So we're, the MD of Bonneville then is gonna fund that, that's coming out of our, they're gonna requisition us? And so my, my question again is like, we're not getting, we're getting almost very little out of that ID three forty-nine, as funding wise, so does City of Cold Lake or Town of Bonneville? Like, what, I don't, not sure.
But we've been paying that requisition for a while, this is about the reserve, about the one percent out of the two seventy, to go into an asset management reserve.
Yeah, this has been ongoing for a few years, since we took over.
Since.
Okay. Seems bizarre.
But we'll keep that, we'll look into that.
And, and to the, to the one question, no, I do not believe, and I would certainly will confirm, but I do not believe the City of Cold Lake or the Town of Bonneville pay into that, because ID three forty-nine is our assessment, not their assessment.
I think what he's meaning that they get all the.
Yeah, they get the benefits, we don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I read this motion already? Ladies, don't believe so?
No.
I'm gonna read it again, just in case I didn't. Moved by Deputy Reeve Fadé of, on behalf of council, that council of the Municipal District of Bonneville approves establishment of the reserve fund by the Greater North Foundation, as outlined in Alberta Housing Act and Management Body Operation and Administration Regulations. Sorry, talked too much today. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Nine point three point one.
I think you skipped one there.
Did I? I'm sorry. Which one do I gotta go to, Doris?
Did I write that in the wrong place? Maybe I did.
Truly Reeve, we have the Wood Creek subdivision, it's nine point four point two.
Oh, I got nine point two point four. My bad.
No problem. Nine point three point one. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So, thank you Reeve and council. Today we are looking at Bylaw Number eighteen thirty-two, for the City of Cold Lake and Municipal District of Bonneville, Number eighty-seven, for the intermunicipal development plan, which is here for first reading. The adoption of this bylaw would replace the current IDP, or Bylaw Number fourteen oh five. These changes are to reflect the updated requirements under the Municipal Government Act, regarding what is required to be included within the IDP, and to ensure that the IDP remains relevant for both the city and the MD. So, a little background, ISL was hired on as a consultant in order to facilitate the development of the IDP. They have provided a plan for review, and will be available for greater details regarding the policies and the plan itself at the public hearing. One of the goals of the intermunicipal development plan is to promote a coordinated and collaborative approach to land use planning and practice, specifically within the areas around the boundary between the city and the MD. This initial draft of the IDP has been worked on by both the city and the MD. The intermunicipal development plan process initially began with a startup meeting on May thirtieth, twenty nineteen, and completed the background review in January twenty twenty. Additionally, a coordinated engagement session between the city and the MD was held on the evening of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and engagement was followed by a document review by both the city and the MD, in a sense moved on to the adoption process. So, in order to coordinate the adoption of the intermunicipal development plan between the city and the MD, it is being proposed that first reading, public hearing, second reading, and third reading be coordinated, so that each occurs on the same day as the city. With that in mind, it is being proposed that council set February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three as a public, as the date for public hearing. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, thank you.
Okay, thank you, just looking for a motion. Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fadé makes a motion.
No, just for clarity, just kind of, just have a question. So, again, I'm getting quite a few concerns about this one from residents. They've seen the plans and everything else, this is not assuming that by next year the City of Cold Lake will take over on all the areas that are outlined, correct?
No, so, the areas outlined are, actually I could delve into it a little bit better here, if, the city itself is actually grayed out in the plan, that's something new that's been changed over. So, you'll notice that the city itself has been grayed out, which indicates that all of the land uses and planning tools in there are essentially separated. That way they don't have to update the MDP on their side anytime they change a future land use within the city. The area that is targeted is specifically land within the MD, and it's just to help alleviate some of the concerns, once it eventually way, way, way down the line, fifty, sixty, however many years down the line, it would be annexed into the city. However, until such a time, it remains under the control of the MD, and follows the MD's regulations, as well as the IDP, any regulations under the IDP.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that for anybody that's watching. Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm looking for a motion then?
Should I go to first reading?
All right, thank you Counselor Swagard, on behalf of council, that bylaw Number eighteen thirty-two, being a bylaw of Municipal District of Bonneville, Number eighty-seven, to adopt the intermunicipal development plan for the Municipal District of Bonneville, Number eighty-seven, and the City of Cold Lake be given first reading? Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried, looking for another motion for time and date?
I'll make a motion for the time and date.
Okay. Thank you Counselor Slipchak for making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten twenty-five AM, as a date and time for the bylaw Number eighteen thirty-two, for public hearing. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto nine point three point two. You again.
Good afternoon. I have bylaw Number eighteen thirty-five, which is a roadway licensing bylaw for first reading. Administration is seeking approval for roadway license eighteen thirty-five, authorizing the MD of Bonneville to enter into agreement to license, license a portion of road plans nine zero two, two three seven one, and nine zero two, zero two nine seven, located in the southeast of twenty-three, sixty-two of one, in accordance with Policy Number three A, point zero one eight, as shown on the map in Appendix B. Bylaw Number eighteen thirty-five is a renewal of an existing road allowance lease, bylaw Number seventeen thirty-five. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance to be used as driveway access from Range Road four one one A. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendations, and there was no concerns. So administration is recommending that council give first reading to bylaw Number eighteen thirty-five, and furthermore, that council set the date for the public hearing for February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, at ten AM.
Thank you. Any discussion, or someone likes to make a motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadé?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Fadé for making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw Number eighteen thirty-five, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, Number eighty-seven, roadway licensing, be given first reading, any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, also looking for a date and time motion.
I'll make a second motion, as well as option one.
Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Fadé for making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten AM, as a date and time for bylaw Number eighteen thirty-five, public hearing. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, on to eighteen thirty-six.
So bylaw Number eighteen thirty-six is a roadway licensing bylaw for first reading. It would authorize the MD of Bonneville to enter into agreement to license a road allowance east of the southeast of ten, sixty-two of one, as shown on the map in Appendix B. Bylaw Number eighteen thirty-six is a renewal of an existing road allowance lease, bylaw Number seventeen thirty-two. The applicants have applied to license a road allowance for agricultural purposes and grazing of cattle, across the southeast of ten and southwest of eleven, sixty-two of one. Copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services to review and recommendation, and there were no concerns. So administration is recommending council give first reading to bylaw Number eighteen thirty-six, and furthermore, to set the public hearing date of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, at ten oh five AM.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Fadé?
Yeah, I'll make the motion for first reading, please.
Thank you Deputy Reeve Fadé for making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw Number eighteen thirty-six, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, Number eighty-seven, roadway licensing be given first reading, any discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, we need a motion for date and time? Okay, thank you Counselor Slipchak, making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten oh five AM, as a date and time for bylaw Number eighteen thirty-six, public hearing. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, on to bylaw Number eighteen thirty-seven.
So bylaw Number eighteen thirty-seven is a roadway licensing bylaw for first reading, authorizing the MD of Bonneville to enter into agreement to license a road allowance north of the northeast of twenty-four, sixty-two of six, as shown on the map in Appendix B. Bylaw Number eighteen thirty-seven is a renewal of an existing road allowance lease, bylaw Number seventeen thirty-six. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance to access the approved surface material leases, eight eight, zero zero seven two, within the southwest of twenty-five, sixty-four of six. Copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services, and there were no concerns. Administration is recommending that council give first reading to bylaw Number eighteen thirty-seven, and furthermore, that council set the public hearing date for February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, at ten ten AM.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you Counselor Slipchak for making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw Number eighteen thirty-seven, being a bylaw of the Municipal, Municipal District of Bonneville, Number eighty-seven, roadway licensing be given first reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Looking for another motion, date and time, thank you Deputy Reeve.
Thank you.
Fadé for making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten ten AM, as a date and time for bylaw Number eighteen thirty-seven, public hearing. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Yes, go ahead, sorry, we're going to eighteen thirty-eight?
Thank you, so bylaw Number eighteen thirty-eight is a road licensing bylaw for first reading, would authorize the MD of Bonneville to enter into agreement to license a road allowance west of the southwest of eleven, sixty-three of five, as shown on the map in Appendix A. The applicants have applied to license a road allowance for the continued use of an existing communications tower. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation, and there were no concerns. Administration is recommending that council give first reading to bylaw Number eighteen thirty-eight, and furthermore, that council set the public hearing date of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, at ten fifteen AM.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Crick?
I'll make the motion to a, for first reading.
All right, thank you Counselor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw Number eighteen thirty-eight, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, Number eighty-seven, roadway licensing be given first reading, any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried, just looking for a date and time motion?
I'll move February twenty-eighth for public hearing.
All right, thank you Counselor Crick, once again, for making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten fifteen AM, as a date and time for bylaw Number eighteen thirty-eight, public hearing. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried, thank you, on to eighteen thirty-nine.
So bylaw Number eighteen thirty-nine is a roadway licensing for first reading, to authorize the MD of Bonneville to enter into agreement to license the road allowance east of the northeast of thirty-two, sixty-one of one, as shown on the map in Appendix A. Bylaw eighteen thirty-six is a renewal of an existing road allowance, lease bylaw seventeen thirty-two. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance for agricultural purposes and grazing and shelter. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation, and there were no concerns. So administration is recommending council give first reading to bylaw Number eighteen thirty-nine, and set the public hearing date for February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, at ten twenty AM.
Thank you. Yes?
I'll make the motion for first reading.
Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Fadé, making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw Number eighteen thirty-nine, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, Number eighty-seven, roadway licensing be given first reading? Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried, thank you.
I'll move February twenty-eighth for the public hearing.
Thank you Counselor Crick for making a motion on behalf of council, that council approves February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten twenty AM, as a date and time for bylaw Number eighteen thirty-nine, public hearing. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried, on to nine point three point seven, thank you Lisa.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to speak on equipment purchases for parks and recreation. Through the twenty twenty-three capital budget, council approved the purchase of two three-quarter ton four-by-four trucks, two utility vehicles, and the replacement of a UTV, UTV side-by-side. Request for quotation was sent to three local companies for each of the units approved for purchase in twenty twenty-three. After reviewing and evaluating each, it was determined that Tiersia Motors met all the requirements provided, the lowest bid, and fell within budget, which was a hundred thirty-five thousand, for the two three-quarter ton pickup trucks. They were as follows, a twenty twenty-four Chevy twenty-five hundred, crew cab, a hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven oh four, twenty-eight, a twenty twenty-three Dodge twenty-five hundred crew cab for a hundred thirty-one thousand, five seventy-six, and a twenty twenty-three F-two-fifty crew cab for one fifty-five, nine thirty-two, fifty. And a twenty twenty-three F-two-fifty crew cab for one fifty-five, nine thirty-two, fifty. Request for quotation was also put out for two utility vehicles. Upon reviewing and evaluating each, the quote from Agland St. Paul met all the requirements, provided the lowest bid, however, slightly over budget, which was twenty-five thousand. They were as follows, the John Deere Gator for twenty-six thousand, seven hundred. A Kubota RTV five-twenty for twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two. And a Polaris Ranger for thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty. The third request for quotation was for the purchase of a UTV side-by-side with tracks and replacement of a Suzuki Tract mini truck. Upon reviewing and evaluating each, the quote submitted by Fifty-four North Powersports met all the requirements and falls within budget, which was sixty-five thousand. The Can-Am unit was forty-two thousand, four sixty-one and forty-five cents. The Polaris Ranger premium was forty thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight, ninety-three. And the Yamaha one thousand was fifty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six, eighty. The strategic plan was goal number three, promote community development. Source of funding, twenty twenty-three capital budget and equipment replacement reserve. Approved budget per type of equipment, the two trucks was a hundred thirty-five thousand. Two utility vehicles was twenty-five thousand, and the UTV side-by-side was sixty-five thousand. Administration recommended action is that council approves the purchase of two Chevrolet twenty-five hundred pickup trucks from Tiersi Motors in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and twenty-eight cents to be funded from the twenty twenty-three capital budget. And that council approves an unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred dollars towards the purchase of two utility vehicles to be funded from the twenty twenty-three capital budget. And furthermore, approves the purchase of two John Deere Gator utility vehicles from Agland St. Paul in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred to be funded from the twenty twenty-three capital budget. And that council approves the purchase of a Can-Am one thousand utility vehicle from Fifty-four North Powersports in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents. With the twenty-five thousand to be funded from the equipment replacement reserve and seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents to be funded from the twenty twenty-three capital budget.
Thank you. Council, have any questions? Sorry, Councilor Crick there? Yeah. Good question.
I was gonna make a motion too, but I was just gonna say I'll move motion, the first motion that we approved, the purchase of the two Chevy three-quarter ton pickup trucks. And all three of them combined were twenty-seven thousand under budget, so good job on finding, I guess, good prices, so.
Okay, thank you for the motion, any more discussion? Councilor Sipchak.
Yeah, okay, so we approved the budget price for this vehicle. But they gotta come back again and ask us approval again to buy them? Like if they're under budget, I don't understand why we have to, is there maybe something we can do, review this policy?
So the, through the chair to the rest of council, the procurement policy right now is that any vehicle purchased, fleet purchased must come back to council once the tenders have come in. It is something that's kind of on the administrative radar to bring back to council and have that conversation. But currently, only council can approve, of all the purchasing we're doing, council is the sole arbitrator on, on the equipment purchasing, vehicle purchasing, particularly heavy equipment, et cetera. So this is required under our procurement policy to bring back to council. Council is essentially approving it twice, you approved the number in the budget, we came in under budget, now we've got to bring the tenders back to council for, for final approval.
So if we could re-review this, if we already gave the guys the money, why, like, can we reduce administrative work and stuff?
Good question.
The, through the chair to Councilor Sipchak, you're absolutely correct, it does create a certain amount of administrative work to bring it back to council. As well as we have found ourselves in a position on several occasions, particularly through COVID and post-COVID where vehicles are hard to get, that we've got a tender, we've got a price. We've had to put the paperwork together, wait for council meeting, come to council meeting, and then by the time we've got it approved by council, those vehicles have been sold. That's happened to us at least twice now in, in the last eight months. So it is, it is, it does add, where we could have just pulled the trigger on something, particularly on, on the big trucks, that's happened to us at least twice on the big trucks.
I'd like to hear everybody else's thoughts here, what, if there's something we can maybe look at.
Makes, makes total sense to me, Councilor Scarsen.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're just gonna ask, so are you guys gonna bring that back in the future?
Yes, I believe, I believe our general manager of corporate services has that on, on her to-do list, and I think it's actually coming back pretty quickly.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Sure, Mr. Councilor Sipchak's gonna be looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Councilor Swaggart, you had a question?
No, it's fine.
Okay, sounds good. So we have a motion on table, any more discussion?
I would add that, I mean, if you do bring back a policy on, on vehicle purchases and all that, I would definitely like to at least see a list of vehicles purchased, if you guys are doing it on your own, right? So something to keep in mind.
So, to Councilor Scarsen through the chair, so that list does come back as part of the budget every year in the capital equipment replacement, a detailed list of what vehicles are on the list to be purchased that year. We wouldn't be purchasing anything that wasn't already previously approved by council.
No, I know, but I mean, it would be nice to kind of get a recap on, this is what we found, this is where we bumped it.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Right, I'll ask for the vote, please. Okay, that was carried. Okay, next. You had a question? We need two motions, right?
Three.
So, three motions. Second one is the expenditure of fifty hundred towards the UTVs.
I'll move, I'll move option one for motion two as well.
Okay, we have a motion on table. That council approves unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of seventeen hundred towards the purchase of two utility vehicles to be funded from the twenty-three capital budget. And furthermore, approves the purchase of two John Deere Gators utility vehicles from Agland St. Paul in the amount of twenty-six seven to be funded from the twenty twenty-three capital budget. Any more questions? Okay, I'll ask for the vote. Okay, that was carried. Now we'll get on to the third motion. Councilor Sipchak, you'll make the motion. Thank you. So that council approves the purchase of a Can-Am one thousand utility, all, utility train vehicle from Fifty-four North Powersports, limited in the amount of forty-two, four sixty-one, forty-five, with twenty-five thousand to be funded from the equipment replacement reserve. And seventeen thousand, four and sixty-one, forty-five to be funded from the twenty-three capital budget. Okay, all, any more discussion? I'll call for the vote. Thank you council, and thank you, that was pretty easy on you there, so it was good. Awesome. Right, infrastructure services, did we cover that one already? No? Okay. Nine point four one, undeveloped road allowance.
Good afternoon, council. Today I have an RFD for the construction of undeveloped road allowance by CNRL. Administration was contacted by CNRL's land agent to construct a road in a portion of our undeveloped road allowance. The proposal is to construct approximately a hundred and fifty meters of Range Road four-four-two, north of Highway fifty-five, to access a future pad in, it's actually southeast twenty-two, sixty-three, Range Four, west of Four, as per the drawing in appendix A. This construction will be done as per policy four A point zero zero one, road construction and development policy. Administration believes the undeveloped road allowance for Range Road four forty-two, north of Highway fifty-five, will not be developed as a through road due to the wetlands located within the road allowance further to the north. Construction of this road allowance will facilitate safe travel across Highway fifty-five and also south on Range Road four forty-two. Reference to strategic plan, goal one, building a viable and diversified regional economy. Objective, develop an economic development strategy inclusive on business and industry attraction, retention, and expansion while maintaining our rural influences. This is a CNRL-funded project, no budget impact at all. And the recommended action is that council approves the request by CNRL to construct a portion of Range Road four forty-two, north of Highway fifty-five, as presented, to be constructed and funded by CNRL.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Dudenko. Any further questions? Councilor Swaggart.
Yeah, just a question, you said south of, you said also south of fifty-five, so are they gonna be using, or Range Road four-four-two to go south?
They already do.
No, but they'll be using it more now, right? If they build another site there.
We did some improvements to that road, which was a cost share. No more is scheduled, my knowledge, south of fifty-five. But the reason they want this approach in, in alignment with the approach going south is so that they don't have to jog out on Highway fifty-five and then back in. So it's just across the road, it's directly across.
So do you think, like, I guess I'll ask again though, will that, will that put more traffic on four-four-two going south, probably? Or would they use fifty-five and go to the traffic circle and south? I, I'm not sure, because four-four-two is not really a great road, especially right there at that, at fifty-five.
To the Deputy Reeve, to Councilor Swaggart, like I said, said earlier, it, it was rebuilt last year, it's in pretty decent shape as of last fall. As far as the traffic increasing, it's, it's bound to increase with more infrastructure being built. So will some of the trucks that are loading oil from south of fifty-five be traveling north? I would anticipate so, yes.
Yeah.
They're building one lease on the north side.
Yeah, but that's a cost share, and if there's any further damage to it, they're gonna, they're gonna fix it on, on their dime anyway, they're good partners of ours, so.
So Deputy Reeve, that is correct.
So, Councilor Scarsen first, and then Sipchak, and then Councilor Crick.
I just had a comment, like, well, for starters, I, I don't believe that they would, they would increase traffic there on four-four-two. I'm sure if given the option, they'd probably take the highway, but I was just curious, is that, like, is that the Crane Lake Road right there, or how far away is that? Is it down in the, the gully there?
It's right in the gully, so we're coming down from the, the traffic circle. That'd be your first Range Road going, going south, it is right opposite to it, kind of in the middle of the field going nowhere.
Crane Lake Road is more.
Way, way up there, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was curious.
Councilor Sipchak.
Okay, I only, only question I got, this is a new road they're gonna have to develop, right?
That is correct.
So after when they go to reclaim a lease, say on a road allowance road, do they reclaim the road too, or do we keep that in our?
In this situation, we would keep that, that road.
So we will keep that road when they go to reclaim the lease at the wells?
We'll have the option, but it will become our road once they turn it over to us, yes.
So if we keep the road, are they building it to M.D. standards then, or?
To the Deputy Reeve, that is correct, we, we issued them a class four road, which is an eight-meter top. And part of the reason being is it's tying into a primary highway, Highway fifty-five, it's not like a, a normal road tying into one of our range roads. So we don't want, for lack of a better term, you know, a narrow road, we'd, we'd want something built to our standards.
Okay, so say all previous road allowance, roads they got in road allowance agreements we got with them, where they built roads, would keep those two as well if they go to reclaim the wells, or will those have to be reclaimed on previous?
My understanding is if it's a lease agreement, then they will have to be reclaimed.
It's, it's in our, it's in our best interest most of the time to keep these roads. It adds to our road infrastructure without us having to spend any money on the, on the construction. There are some that would be on a leased or a licensed road allowance that maybe weren't built to road standard, because maybe it was just a licensed road allowance that, that they were just using. But the vast majority of these, we would, we'd take ownership of the road a year after the road is built, after it completes its final acceptance inspection, and then from there, we own the road. There may be agreements on some of these roads, or CNRL will do continuing maintenance on the roads, obviously any road damage, et cetera, et cetera. And on some of the roads, they actually do all of the maintenance on the roads. But it's in our best interest to allow them to build these roads, and then, and then we take the roads over, adds to our road inventory at no additional cost to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for clarification, Councilor Crick.
Yeah, I guess that sort of is a little bit of my question too, what their CEO just said, but I wanted to ask, will, will CNRL maintain the road, like, as far as snow plowing and stuff, would probably be responsible for that?
Ultimately, they're the only user of the road, so they will likely do the snow plowing on it, such as other roads where they're the prominent user, recent four-seventy-four, six-oh-two.
Then I'll make the motion to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion on table, any more questions? Okay, thank you, I'll call for the vote, please. So that'd be option one, the council approves the request for Canadian Natural Resources Limited to construct a portion of Range Road four forty-two, north of Highway fifty-five, as presented, to be constructed by, and funded by CNRL.
And, and I would add for council, just slightly off the topic, we are in the, the final stages of finalizing an agreement with CNRL to pave three miles existing of current cold mix and gravel on six-thirty out on the west side.
Nice. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
All right. Let's, do you want, let's take a quick ten minute break, please.
Bring for me. We're on to nine point four point two, correct? Sorry?
Nine point four point two.
That's the addition?
I didn't forget.
Okay.
Okay, so I mean, I just want to start by saying I recognize that this may or may not be a emergent issue, but it's been something that I've been kind of dealing with for a little while, and, and I just seen it as a, an opportunity to get this resolved today. So I had asked, I talked to Brian Bastelko about going to check out these lights. They've been having a rash of thefts out at Wood Creek Resort and, and loiterers, I guess, hanging around in the dark areas in the streets. So I asked Brian to just go take a look and see if, if they, there was about six or eight residents that wrote me a letter, and, and I asked him to, to see if their concerns were legitimate, and if there was an opportunity to turn their lights on. Brian went and checked it out one morning on his way back from our way to work, and he responded, he said, the west side has one light off at the bin site, and the east side has two. And then he adds, I can see why they want it energized. So he did, he did also state that his hands are tied though, because the policy, it does not match the policy as far as where the lights can be turned on. And then he informed me that I'd have to take it to council, so that's why we're here today. I'd like to add that Wood Creek is, is, you know, it's not quite like other subdivisions, because they do look after their own snow plowing, and they do look after their own garbage disposal. So it's two services that the M.D. provides that we don't for them, I've confirmed that with our staff. So I just, I guess I feel that turning on three lights for them to brighten up, especially the one by the bin site that they maintain, should be an easy, an easy path forward. And furthermore, I'll add to my motion to turn on those three lights, that we look at that policy, and, and not necessarily make it an arbitrary number, but give our staff a little bit more leeway to decide for themselves if turning lights on are warranted. Because this, I feel, is one area that, you know, our, our staff there could have probably just turned the lights on if they felt it was necessary, even though it didn't meet fifty percent developed, so that's where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Holgan.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, yeah, Councilor Scarsen is absolutely correct, this is probably one we could have handled ourselves. Unfortunately, the appendix in the policy is very clear, it says shall not energize until fifty percent developed. We absolutely had zero latitude to make this happen. We absolutely had zero latitude to make this happen any quicker than what it did. So council's aware, a street light has a monthly cost, once energized, of approximately $35. So three lights is $100 a month. It's not a significant, it's not a significant amount of money, especially if security and real crime is an issue, having $100 a month of, of streetlights is not a big, not a big deal. But we will bring the policy back fairly quickly, because if you continue to scroll down to the next, you'll see there, it's in the appendix, keep going, one more. This is what tied our hands, the very last sentence, "Street lighting shall not be energized until a minimum 50% of the lots are developed." We just had no, we had no discretion, no ability to do anything. So we'll bring this policy back, and like a couple of the other policies we talked about today, we, we could action quicker and give better customer service if we had some ability to. And the problem with numbers like 50% is what if they were 48%? You get to a point where it, hard numbers.
Splitting hairs.
Where we are. So we'll bring this back as well, and once, if council decides to energize these lights, we can have them energized fairly quickly.
Yes, Council Slipchuck?
Okay, for my clarification, you said there's three lights need to be energized. So you brought it as emergent item, and this would clarify if it's gonna help deter crime for them. And wouldn't that be, for my clarification?
I think there's a good argument you made that would be an emergent item. However, it's been going on for quite a while, and it hasn't come to council. So I think there's also an argument made the other way, but I, but I think it's a valid, I think reasonable people can disagree sometimes, and I think this, I think this could have been made a pretty good argument, that it was an emergent item, given crime is involved.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve?
I think, you know, the whole reason why 50% came in, I think we were all in the policy committee at the time, was, you know, there's a lot of people that are complaining about, you know, dark sky and why there's, you know, three houses on 140-lot subdivision that's, that's lit up, and why is the taxpayer paying money? So this seemed to be like a pretty good number to, to go with, but it's like everything else, we, we adjust and we learn, and, and, I mean, it's, the standards are there already. So it's not as if it's, it's good. So bringing the policy back, a little bit of leeway for administration would be pretty well ideal.
Yeah, because I, I believe if they, if there was 140 lots and three there, they wouldn't be energizing them anyway, right? So, okay, go ahead and make a motion, Darcy.
Yeah, I did already. Right.
Are they, I apologize.
Moved by Council Skarson on behalf of council, that council directs administration to energize three streetlights in the Wood Creek subdivision as discussed, and furthermore directs administration to bring back a policy number 4B.016 installation and energizing of streetlights policy to a future committee of the whole meeting for further discussion. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Council Craig?
So do we own, do we own, like, the MD own the lights, sir, or what?
Through the Reeve, to Council Craig, I'll have to check to see what the status is, because there are, there are two, there are two programs with Atco when it comes to streetlights. One is owned, and one is Atco owns, and we pay a different rate per month, depending on which one it is. I'm not sure, given the Wood Creek subdivision, which, which way those poles are. I'm not sure if Mr. Deneko knows either. So I'm not sure if those are owned. We met with Atco here, oh, probably six or eight weeks ago, to talk about a lot of our lighting situation. And right now in the MD, we're about 60/40 owned to, that we own, and about 40% that Atco owns. And we're in some discussion with Atco right now as to what the best way for the MD to move forward is. 100% ownership with a smaller monthly cost, or a larger monthly cost? And they own, but they take care of all the capital expenses. So I believe Corporate Services is currently doing the math as to whether or not it's in our best interest to become owners of all of our lights, or to become renters of all our lights. There's a pretty significant monthly difference, but if we own them, we are also responsible for the capital expenses, when the poles have to be replaced, when the heads have to be replaced. So it's, so right now, we're, we're, call it 50/50.
I realize this is a small amount in the, in scope of our budget, but it just makes me wonder, like, we haven't, there's no background information on this, no report from our administration, and I, I don't know why we're, like, I don't know if they, we own the lights, if they own the lights. I don't really know anything about how the Wood Creek Resort is set up and the covenants of that place. You said that they plow their own snow and take care of their own garbage removal. I don't know why they would do that if they, there's, there's gotta be some kind of setup there, agreements in the past that we have no idea about, and maybe we're not even responsible for this. And even at $35 a light, it's still $1,260 a year. So I don't, I, I guess I can't, I'm in support of lighting up communities, but in this particular case, without having the information, I think it's.
So I could probably help a little bit in terms of, it'd be three lights. So if, if we're going with three lights, so non-invested, they call it non-invested and non-invested, is the Atco terminology, owned or not owned? A non-invested light for us would have a cost of approximately $19.79 a month. An invested light would have a cost of $37.63 per month. I got that directly from Atco this morning. There are a couple of other variables that I won't get into, but that's the low end, and that's the high end. So right now, in terms of these three lights, you're talking approximately about an $11 to $12 a month difference between each light. So worst-case scenario is your $35 a month difference in terms of the rental over our ownership as to what our monthly cost would be. Now, the rental does not take, or ownership and the cheaper rate does not take into account. We also are responsible for the capital replacement of the pole and everything else that goes with that down the road. So I'm sure that when you did, when you did the final analysis of what a pole costs and a head costs to replace, we're probably not much difference in terms of an invested rate or a non-invested rate. So right now, like I said, we're just shy of $20 a month on a non-invested, and we're 30, we're $37 a month on an invested. So we're $17 a month per pole difference in price. So if that, if that helps any.
Deputy Reeve for them?
For me, the, I trigger word, this was the theft, right? I mean, you're.
I ran, I ran on, on crime prevention, and this is, this is the top of my list for that. So I think with Wood Creek, what I believe, I think they paid for their own, their own standards, but that's just me, but from recall. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right, and that's really what spurred this conversation. I think with Christmas break, they had a few break-ins there, or some vehicle fat damage or whatever. But I don't think, like, they're not Wood Creek's lights, if that's what you're asking, right? And, and, I mean, the owner of Wood Creek is on this letter, and I'm sure if he had the ability to turn the lights on, he would, right? So they're coming to the MD because the MD has to turn on the lights. And I verified with Matt and with Brian as well, that we don't look after the garbage, and we don't look after the, the snow plowing. And I guess I could also verify with Susan that we do collect taxes from them as well, right? So I think that the trade-off is fine, right? Considering the, the services, they do take care of themselves, so. Easy one for me.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seen none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. I believe we're going to 9.5.2, is that correct? Or did we do that while I was going? No?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Administration has been completing a thorough review of historic MD bylaws as part of a process to move the bylaw registry to a digital platform and update any missing information. So during this process, some bylaws have been found to be still active that should have been repealed due to no longer being required or relevant. Council gave bylaw number 1831 first reading as presented on January 10, 2023, and today administration is now seeking second and third reading for the bylaw. Some of the bylaws that this bylaw would repeal include some that have just been updated and not properly repealed when they were actually replaced, and some that are simply no longer relevant to municipal operations. Attached for your review is Appendix A, the bylaw number 1831, and Appendix B, the bylaws that are proposed to be repealed. And our recommended action is that the bylaw be given second and third reading today.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, I'll be there for second reading.
All right, thank you, Council Slipchuck, for making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw number 1831, being a bylaw in the Municipal District of Bonneville, number 87, to repeal bylaws that are no longer applicable and/or relevant to municipal operations to be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, looking for third.
I'll make the third motion, please.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideev, for making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw number 1831 be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Onto 9.6.1.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. 9.6.1 is a council invitation from St. John's United Church for their luau dine and dance February 25th. The St. John's United Church is hosting a luau and dance on the 25th of February, starting at 5:30 PM, and has invited the Reeve and council to attend. The cost for this event is $80 per person, which includes dinner and entertainment. St. John's United Church Luau, Dine and Dance, the cost source of funding would be $80 per person, be funded from the council grants to individuals and non-government organizations' budget. And administrative recommendations, the council approves the purchase of X number of tickets for, to be named counselors to attend the St. John's United Church Luau, Dine and Dance to be held February 25, 2023, and to be funded from the 23 operating budget. You can see both the letter and the poster regarding the luau and the dance.
Out of the, the three options, luau, the dine, and dance, I can only do one, I can only dine, so I'm probably out.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm available that weekend. I've kind of got another event pending right now, so.
I guess, does anybody want to attend?
I'll go do it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Council Slipchuck. Is there a table or just by person, or how is it? Tickets?
My understanding, Mr. Reeve, it's, it's just per person. There was no mention in any correspondence about purchasing a table.
I'll make a motion for two tickets for Council Slipchuck.
Okay, thank you.
You coming with me?
I'll find some of them.
We don't need a motion for that. Or do we?
Please.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Deputy Reeve Fideev, on behalf of council, the council approves the purchase of two tickets for Council Slipchuck to attend the St. John's United Church Luau, Dine and Dance to be held on February 25, 2023, in the amount of $160 to be funded from the 2023 operating budget. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Onto correspondence and information.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. You can see the correspondence and information package in front of you. The only, the two that I would point out specifically is the letter from the Town of Bon Accord to the Minister of Health regarding the ambulance crisis, and the letter from County Vermillion River regarding property tax exemption. We've all been beating the drum on property tax exemption and the moratorium that's currently held on that, but you can see those, those letters there. I would add that we are working on a meeting with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs during convention coming up in March, as well as we continue to try to get a meeting with the Minister of Ag, Mr. Nate Horner, regarding the natural gas co-op situation. I, I've also had a conversation with the new sale of County Vermillion River, Mr. Alan Parkin. They actually own their own gas. As a matter of fact, they're a gas supplier to some of our, some of our neighbors to the south of us. And I will be planning on meeting with their general manager, who's in charge of the gas, their gas utility company that they own, as to how they got there. That's, that's been planned for some time in the next couple of weeks for me to sneak down, sneak down to Vermillion, or Kit Scotty, actually, and meet with them regarding how they've set up their gas utility company, in the event that that's an option we may want to consider someday in the future.
This, if you're going, could a guy come?
For sure.
Okay, let me know. Thank you. You wanted to say something?
I did. I just, I liked what County Vermillion River had done, just as a breakdown in lost revenue. Do we have, can we put together something simple like that?
We absolutely, we can certainly look into it. We can talk to our taxation department. Part of the problem would be, in this case, is estimating accurately, because until we know what well activity there is, we don't know what we don't know. And we could estimate, given, you know, traffic that's in the area and those type of things, but if we're not being told what wells are being, what wells are going in and what, what activity there is, it's very difficult for us to actually come up with an accurate number as to what we've lost.
Although, the AER would be able to give us information on it. And I'm thinking of the wells that just went close to Council Kirk's place, like, they're dumping on more oil than I've ever seen in one spot.
We'll certainly, we'll certainly look into it. There's, absolutely, we can estimate what, what that's cost us. We've, we've run this up the flagpole several times with the minister in the last six or eight months, and each time, the answer's been exactly the same. We promised, they promised industry and moratorium, and they're sticking to their promise. I've heard the word commitment be thrown around a few times in, in meetings with both the DMs and the, and the, and the minister. I, I think it's probably still a battle worth fighting, but we are, we are slowly coming to the end of the moratorium in another year and a bit, anyway, so.
I think it's a moot point, so, I mean, it just, it's gonna go nowhere, and to take you guys away from that is, it's, it's a hard no from them.
Oh, yeah.
A few times, and, and I, I understand their, their position. Sorry, Council Skarson.
It's fine, yeah. That's, I kind of wanted to echo those same things. I didn't know if they were asking us to send a letter as well, or what was going on there. It would be nice to know numbers for even our own negotiating purposes, right? And just to remind companies, hey, this is how much you've saved drilling in our area over the last three years, right? So it could come in handy, for sure.
We'll certainly reach out to the AER and try to find out what, what the new well activity is, and, and then from there, we can put an estimate as to what that's cost us over the last 18 months.
Thank you. Yes, councilor?
I'd like to just to mention a 10.5 card from Resident, how they thanked the staff for their snow removal, and also for all the Christmas lights that, the new Christmas lights was really appreciated. I can't really count the last name, but from LaRette, so I just wanted to make note of that for the cameras.
Yeah, we also had that gentleman that was speaking in the, in the bylaws today. He praised staff quite a bit as well. That's the first thing he did. He took a lot of time to praise staff, so good on him, and great job, staff. Thank you for mentioning that, Council Slipchuck.
I'd like to make a motion to accept all this correspondence as information.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideev, for making a motion on behalf of council, that council accepts the following correspondence as information, 1 through 11. Any discussion on this? Would you like me to read them all, Darcy?
Could you read them all? No, I just wanted to, made the comment that that guy was probably not very happy. He made so much time commenting on staff when you cut him off there at the end, so.
Well, he was at 19 minutes, I think, so I.
Yeah, you're right.
I think, Darcy, yeah, I'm not gonna say. All right. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. Thank you. Onto reports from members of council. Whoever'd like to speak first.
Okay, I'll start, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Darcy?
I'll, I'll second that motion. I got really nothing to report, except that I did just send a note out to that group that was talking about the streetlights, and they're all.
all ecstatic about our decision, so they, I'll pass along their thank you to the rest of council as well, so.
Okay, Counsel Kirk or Slupchak or, yeah?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I really had was the Ag Service Board Conference since our last council meeting. It was a good conference overall. One of the, I guess, just a couple of things of interest there, one guy said that the four-H kids achieve well above the mid-average when, when they become adults, which I thought was kinda neat, and there's a lot of four-H kids in the area. I bumped into Paul McLaughlin there and kinda talked to him on our idea of trying to get, one of FCMs in Calgary in a year and a half.
Yeah.
Trying to get them to do some tours to the showcase the oil and the gas industry, and he was, he thought that was a great idea. So I think we're gonna be bringing that up on Friday again as well. Yeah, there's some, there were some concerns about the cattle. There's not enough packing capacity, and it's kinda affecting prices, and I'm not really a farmer, so I don't understand that fully. I think you, or you even understand that a lot better than I did. And the last presenter was swearing enough that I stuck around long enough to give him a poor review and then left the room, and had a great conversation with other people that didn't wanna hear a bunch of swearing either. And QDM is his name that he goes by for presenting, so if you ever get the chance to avoid it, I'd recommend it. Other than that, though, the conference was very informative and really great conference.
Dana or?
The Reeve was at Kennesaw on Saturday, and I know that because I talked to Alberta Alpine President Patrick Gillespie, and he said he talked to the mayor, and I said, well, no, you talked to the Reeve, but it's okay. And so he, he had, I guess, kinda a good discussion with you. He, he talked to me a little bit because we talked about kinda operations of the hill and, cause he's into that sort of thing, and he mentioned the hill at McMurray. And, you know, said that there, the hill there is kinda similar to what we've got. They've got a big skating rink up there at the top of that hill, too, and Adventure Park, and he said they're, they're pretty much running breakeven at that hill, so he said it's, you know, it's possible to do it. So maybe it'd be nice to talk to that guy again some other time, but maybe I would ask administration to kinda look at, I think it's called Vista Ridge at McMurray. We looked at that probably eight, nine years ago, but look against, you know, their operating, and look at some of the other ski hills, how they're operating, and, you know, maybe we get some ideas from them. Spent a bit of time with Dan and Monica Iverson from the Blizzard Ski Club, and Bev Holoboff, and, and just kinda really good that, that they've got that ski team and, and putting racers into, you know, further down the chain. I mentioned that Nathan Sylvester, who was a Blizzard skier, apparently now he's on the Alberta ski team and probably going to greater heights from there. Then the other meeting we had just last night was the C2 meeting, and Reeve's also at that one. They, they always talk about, they're doing a great job at the C2, they're always talking about budgeting, and, and they'll go over a couple of months of budgets, and they seem to be doing okay. They, they, of course, announced, they, they got the CFAP grant that they applied to, to do the Agriplex renovations, and so they, that kinda helps them out a fair amount, cause that was five, over five hundred thousand that they got from the province. We reviewed the strategic plan that the board had worked on probably a year or two years ago, and they're just finalizing a strategic plan. Year, year, about a year now.
A year, okay.
Yeah, I guess not even a year.
Okay. And so that's just about finalized. They mentioned their own gas show, they will have one this, this June at the C2, which is a good revenue generator for them. And the new Agriplex, well, the renovated Agriplex, they are having a few issues, though, they have, well, just one issue, actually, it's a fire alarm system that they can't quite figure out, so that's why it's not quite open yet, they're gonna be working hard to figure that one out. And that was it, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a question, so can you elaborate on the Agriplex a bit? Like, are they waiting for a part, or do they just don't know the system, or what's going on there, like?
Well, they, can I ask?
Yeah, you know more than I do.
Yeah, so they ripped out the old system, right? And then they put in a system that's compatible with the C2 center? And there's just one thing that ain't hooking up somehow, and it won't pass the, it doesn't go enough time, it doesn't ring long enough, or something like that, and it just, it fails every time, and they don't, and then you ask the people that we bought it from, and they, like, next, I think they're coming out on the third or the sixth of February, and we've been waiting for this to get done forever, cause we could open it last year. And that's our biggest hiccup, and they just can't figure out, and they say the problem's in the old building, but then when you do the, the system check in the old building, it works, but then you incorporate the new one, and it fails somehow. And, and our guys are trying to find it, but you think it's the guys that we bought it from, but they don't, it just, it's just, it's very confusing for me, cause I, you'd think the guys that you bought it from should be the guys that have to fix it, but it seems like we have our own tech guys that are trying to, trying to find the problem, and then the, they're supposed to be coming, the main guys are supposed to be coming on February third or sixth again to take a look at it, but that's, everything else is good to go, she's got the stamp, but we just can't. The only other thing we can do is hire a fire marshal to stay there for all events to watch it, and then you can open, but that's like, where are you gonna find, we don't have enough of those to go around as it, as it is. So that's what we're waiting for, unless it's very frustrating, we're all frustrated, like, we... Are you done? Yeah, go ahead, Donnie.
Yeah, I had a Lakeland Lodge and Housing meeting last Wednesday, we got between vacancies, we're looking for ways to get these rooms rented out, so we're gonna continue working on that. Saturday, I went out to the Canoos Ski Hill, and they had the Canoos Blizzard's doing their competition, I got surprised, the amount of people there, and it was cool, neat to see everybody so happy, beautiful weather, families, and that. I know this place costs us money, so, but I'd hate to see it go, like, we gotta figure, gotta get our heads together here and figure out what we can do here to get this, keep this thing going, make it viable. And as well, if we, once we go to closed session, if we can further discuss your conversation you had with the mayor while in regards to the, once it's closed session, and that's it.
Okay, I guess Darcy touched on that. I, I met at Canoos, so I'd like to, again, thank the staff for putting on a great show there. We were, we were fed and watered very well. We, we met with the northeast region, the mayors and Reeves and indigenous leaders of the area. And, you know, we always have all your own little things in your own municipality that you wanna bring up, too, but we decided as a whole group to put Highway twenty-eight as our main focus, and then somebody wanted to bring up lobbying, the government, so hire a lobbyist to, on behalf of us, and, but the biggest thing was to have money to hire a lobbyist to go on behalf of the whole region to, like, pound this home, this Highway twenty-eight, and our whole area needs it. So I talked to Al briefly, and, and they are looking for funding, so I just, I says, I'm sure the MD will put five thousand dollars towards this, cause we have to try to find funding, but they, they have a per capita thing that they're gonna, so I, I donated like five thousand bucks on behalf of us on the, on the, you know, I know it'd have to come back to council, but just giving you guys a bit of a, and I'm sure no one's gonna be objecting to that, to, to anything to do with Highway twenty-eight, cause it's our main, more, main corridor. We've been all fighting this for a long time, so we're just trying to push as a total unit with everybody on the table from the northeast to go on that, so.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those things, like, I mean, I, I'm for, I'm for lobbyists, man, but we, we have MLAs that get paid some, some serious dollars to lobby for us, and why these guys aren't doing it, and why the province is not listening to us, is, is beyond me, but, yeah, those guys should be lobbying for us, simple as that, and they, and they have been.
I agree, yes.
Mr. Reeve, and members of council, so the CEO of the town of Bonneville reached out to me yesterday. He has some concerns, and I would probably admit that I echo his concerns. This group has not been formalized in any way, shared before, does not have the terms of reference, and council has not formally recognized this as a committee that the Reeve would sit on. I would suggest that prior to us, and, and I don't think there's an issue with five thousand dollars to lobbyists, if that's the way council wants to go, the, the question is, what's the terms of reference? As I looked at the group that attended the other day, and I know Mr. Rogers next door kinda feels the same way I do, is, there is a big difference in terms of lobbying efforts for the northeast from what we need here to what, say, Minburne County or Vegreville would need. They're sitting right on Highway sixteen, we're not. So I think one of the things, I know Bill was going to speak to, to Mayor Brasso and talk to her about potentially getting this group to form a terms of reference, bring the terms of reference back to council. We formally recognize that, or council could formally recognize that group as a committee that the Reeve sat on, and it would be much easier to, to give money for a lobbying effort. My experience with lobbying is hit and miss. On some occasions, lobbying is quite successful, if you have the right lobbyist, who knows the right people, and on other occasions, I've, I've seen municipalities spend money in lobbying that was just five thousand dollars. Yeah, five thousand dollars is not, a lobbyist in this case would probably cost, you know, lobbyists typically run thirty to fifty thousand or, or better, so.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm talking about our share.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So I would suggest that at the next meeting of this group that, that Reeve Kalinsky requested that group carves out or crafts a terms of reference as to what, as to what that group is about and what they are going to do, otherwise, these groups tend to, tend to start wandering. We do have a Mayors and Reeves Caucus, both urban and, and rural already, so maybe calling this a Mayors and Reeves group is maybe not the right name for it, maybe it should be the Northeast Leaders or, or something, I don't know. But I, but I know that Mr. Rogers called me yesterday, and he has, he has some concerns that, not with what the, the end goal is, but just that it's just kind of happening without any, without any terms of reference.
Okay, I'd just like to say one thing, that it's, it's amazing that the mayor of Vegreville and the mayor of LeMond are pushing on our behalf, Highway twenty-eight, which doesn't even really touch them really that, so that's, that's pretty nice to see, and they're gonna give, they're gonna kinda give up their little, whatever they need in their county, or whatever they need in their town, or city, or whatever it is, to let's get Highway twenty-eight for the betterment of all of our northeast region. So that really, you know, that really made a guy feel good when someone like that takes the, you know, we're all preaching it, but they took it, the bull by the horn there, and they're, you know, they, they're going for it, so, and there, we have a five-person, you know, kind of a, to take charge on this, and there, there are two of the guys that are on that, so that's pretty, pretty impressive.
All right, anything else from anybody? Okay, I think we need, we have in camera, we need a motion to go into camera then? Okay, thank you, Counsel Slupchak, for making a motion. Any discussion, seen none, all those, I'll call for the vote. That's Kerry, thank you. Welcome back, I guess we need a motion to end the meeting. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making that motion. Any discussion? Seen none, all those in favor, or call, I guess, all, show of hands. Kerry, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.